We say the pledge, we're going to stay standing for a few minutes, for a moment of silence. Unfortunately, we have had two deaths in the past couple of weeks. We had Nicholas Gershka, who was a 2011 graduate, who died. And this past weekend, we had David Wright, who was a bus driver at Hamilton Elementary, who passed away this past weekend. So we'll ask for a moment of silence for both of those after the pledge. If everyone could stand now and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take a brief moment of silence, everyone. Thank you. Maureen, if you could call the roll, please? Linda Evans Otto.
Here.
Douglas Garden.
Here.
Larry Cerisi.
Here.
Cheryl Clarkin.
Here.
Robert Jones.
Here.
William Mudge. Kimberly Page.
Here.
Julia Halls. Thank you. Maureen, if you could do the calendars, too, please? December 10th, 7:00 PM, Stony Lane School Blue Ribbon Celebration. December 10th, at 8:00 PM, school committee meeting also at Stony Lane School. December 16th, 6:30 PM, joint meeting with the town council at Beachwood Senior Center. December 18th, 5:00 PM, facility subcommittee meeting. December 23rd to December, I'm sorry, to January 1st, holiday recess. December 25th, Christmas Day, all schools and offices closed. January 1st, New Year's Day, all schools and offices closed. Thank you. Thank you. All right, we have a fun part of our meeting tonight where we have presentations tonight for the state champion Unified Volleyball Team. So if the committee wants to come down, we'll all be shaking hands.
Thank you very much for that applause. I did not quite expect it. We actually have several champions in the audience tonight, not just the volleyball team, but we will start with the volleyball team as long as they have dutifully lined up getting ready for this. Appreciate that. Are our coaches Tara Harrington and Jody Trigella here? They are? Okay. You guys want to come on up first?
Congratulations.
I'm going to introduce the players, and then if you guys could say a few words about them. Okay, the members of the Division III State Championship Unified Volleyball Team. First is Izzy Bowe. Shake a few hands if you'd like on your way here.
What?
High five.
Yes!
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And Bree Brier.
Oh, thank you.
Dylan Deacon.
Oh, Dylan.
Julia Evans.
Oh, Lord!
Tyler Gould.
Abby Hikes.
Who?
Yeah, I guess she was out on the other side. Chase Main. Chase is here, all right. Molly McKay. Holly's here. Danielle McKenna. Shawna Olerio. Shauna? Shayna, sorry. Shay Shay. And Jackie Tantimonico. Ah, you know how much work it was to get that last name right? At least she could do a show up, geez. Okay. Bailey Taylor. All right.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Katrina Tierney. Kayla Trigella. Captain of the team, congratulations. She's great. Aiden Walsh. Andrew Zola. Tiffany Kopel. Tiffany, I'm going to have to double check to see if you have your name on the certificate. You'll get it. I'm not sure if I have it in this cap or not, but, okay. All right. Okay. So, Coach, how about a few words about the team?
Oh, God. Talked like a robot. Do you want to say something?
No.
Okay, well, this was the second year that I coached this team, and I lost my assistant, but I gained a really great one. Thank you, Jody.
Thank you.
At the last minute. This team was awesome. We really came together a couple of, hmm, a couple of games in. And we did lose a couple, but we gained a couple friends. So, thank you. And I hope you guys try out next year, too.
Congratulations, champions. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is Coach Brian McNeese here? Okay, come on up, Coach. Coach McNeese has the honor of being the coach of Jamie Hazel, who is the freshman girls' cross-country champion in the state of Rhode Island, everybody.
Wow!
Congratulations. Coach, any few words here?
Well, prior to this season, Jamie coming in from middle school was a big surprise, to be honest with you, because I tend to look at all the middle school times and to see how the kids are doing in the meets and the track meets and cross-country meets. And honestly, I don't think anybody would have picked Jamie to be number one in the state coming into this year, but she worked really, really hard over the summer, and she really proved herself. Amazing, amazing athlete she is and great person, and she's got great support from her folks and her grandfather's here, and so we're all so proud of her.
Congratulations. Two more champions. Is Coach Tim O'Neill here tonight? Coach is not here. All right, well, how about Lucia Volabrook and Grace Callahan? Grace is the, is one half of the girls' tennis doubles state championship team this year, everybody.
Oh, okay.
This one looks all yours, Grace, goodbye.
Well, I started playing tennis freshman year, and this is my first year being partners with Lucia. And we went undefeated throughout the season. We had a lot of fun. And, yeah, I'm a junior.
Congratulations, champion. All right. Well, thank you, everybody. That's our presentation right now. You are more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. It's a lot of fun. So, please, stick around. We'd love to have you.
I wish I had that kind of, actually, ability to send a template to school. Hey, are you with one of these? Awesome. Congrats. That's fantastic. All right, so we have another presentation here by Dr. Humbert, the Rhode Island Growth Model, and I hope you're quite, you're as exciting as the last group that we had here. Dr. Humbert?
Thank you. Can everybody hear me? Okay, the growth model is an interactive tool that's available to us. It's actually called the Rhode Island Visualization Tool. And the important thing about it is that it's providing a lot of data, both on proficiency and on growth. So I'm going to explain where this growth comes from, and then also, it's important to know upfront that each of the growth percentile ratings that we have for students, we have median growth percentiles for teachers, classes, and schools. And the teachers have a restricted access so that they can see their students' scores. So they have access to their current students, and then they have access to the students they taught. If they're a sixth-grade teacher, the students are in eighth grade right now. So it's important to see how the whole model works, and this is the public access that I'm going to demonstrate to you. But first, a little bit of background on how this is developed. So the Rhode Island Growth Model is a statistical model, and it's measuring growth, and this growth comes from our state assessments, which are right now in the Kneecap Test. The growth is not expressed in gains or losses on test scores, but it is expressed in what we call student growth percentiles. So you'll see this SGP everywhere, and that's what it refers to, is the student growth percentiles. A student growth percentile describes the student's current achievement relative to his or her academic peers who scored similarly on previous state assessments. So when a student scores a certain score on the kneecap, they're put into a cohort, and that cohort is students who scored similarly to them, usually exactly to them. And those are students from across the state. So here, they just describe the difference between a percentage and a percentile, and that's important, because people sometimes get that confused. So just basing it on 100 students makes it simple. 100 students take a test with 10 questions. If Alicia correctly answers eight out of 10 questions, then her percentage of correct answers is 80. If the other 99 students all receive percentages lower than 80, then Alicia has outperformed 99% of the students. In other words, she is in the 99 percentile. So the percentile refers to the student's rating relative to the other students being compared to. So this is a normative measurement. There it is. Therefore, the end result is a normative comparison rather than an absolute one. Percentiles range from 1 to 99. A higher percentile is better, but a low percentile still signifies some growth. So how is this all calculated? First of all, they use quantile regression to do the analysis. Then, in order to calculate the student growth percentile, each student's growth is compared to the growth on his or her academic peers, so students who, as I just said, scored similarly on their kneecap assessment. Academic history is the only factor by which the students are grouped. In some cases, in some states, they use other factors that are demographic. For example, they might use the free and reduced percentage of poverty level to group the students. So they will use regression models to account for those other factors. This model in Rhode Island accounts only for academics. And at least two consecutive kneecap scores are needed to calculate the SGP. That is why this is only calculated for students in grades three to seven, because we don't test in ninth grade, so we don't have eighth-grade testing, and we don't, we don't have consecutive years in high school either. When we do the PRC assessment, that will change, because we'll have yearly assessments right through to 11th grade. So they're explaining again here that a student growth percentile describes the student's current achievement relative to his or her academic peers who scored similarly on previous state assessments. So here's the example. In third grade, Alicia obtains a scale score of 335. The first, the first number three refers to the grade. She's in third grade, so that's where the three comes from, and the 35 is her score on the kneecap reading test, in this case. The following year, she takes the fourth-grade kneecap reading assessment, and this time she scores, well, before her fourth-grade student growth percentile is calculated, she is grouped with her academic peers who all scored 335 in grade three. So then, based on her performance on a fourth-grade reading assessment, relative to that of her academic peer group, her SGP is then calculated. Okay, so, so let's back up for a minute. So in third, she scores 35, or 335 on the kneecap. She's put into a cohort of students who all scored 335. And then, when she takes the test the next year, whatever her score is, it's going to be calc, she's going to get her rating according to how the students that are in her same cohort, how they do the following year. And that's how the growth is measured.
So it's based on her initial score compared to the...
Her initial score, right. Groups her with everybody, right, in the state who scored at that score.
So if she does, in theory, she could do below average, but if everybody else does below average, then she's average.
It's relative to how they perform as well.
So the peer group is just one score? It's not a, not a range?
Excuse me?
The peer group is just one score, not a range?
Yeah, well, that's, that I can't answer specifically, because they are, have extended it to be the history, the academic history of the student. So at this point, I believe that it's mostly the exact score that they're going by, the 335. But in some of the literature that I've read recently, as they're gaining more data, they're expanding it to include the history. So I'm not sure if there is, if that extends a range rather than the one score. That's a good question. Okay, so now, this is a little visual that will describe it a little bit more. Okay, so here's Alicia, and she scores 335 on her third-grade reading test. All her other academic peers, she's grouped with them, so this forms a cohort. They all score 335. Okay, the following year, in fourth grade, Alicia scores 447. So four means she's in fourth grade, and her score now is 47. And so compared to everybody else the year before who had a 335, we're going to assume that that's the way it's being calculated, compared to everybody else, she is in the 50th percentile. So she is an average score, basically, compared to the kids who were in her cohort the year before. Okay, so now, another case. Here's Tony. Tony scored a 350 in third grade, and so he's grouped in a cohort who all scored 350. So he's in a different cohort than Alicia. Okay, they took the same test, but because they scored differently in third grade, they have their own cohort that is established throughout the state. So Tony, in fourth grade, scores a 460 on his reading assessment for kneecap, and that puts him at the 50th percentile. So what's wrong here? They're both 50th percentile. How can that be when they have different scores?
Do you have a way of showing each cohort? Is that how you divide it out, show each cohort? Because that's obviously the difference, is that they're in different...
Yeah, that's the identification, right?
That's the, that's the answer, is that they are in different cohorts. So their, their student growth percentile is relative only to their group. So they can both be in the 50th percentile. Tony's in the 50th percentile of his academic peers in third grade who scored at 350. Alicia's in the 50th percentile for her set of academic peers. They all scored 335.
All right, Dr.
Hang with me, John.
Okay, go ahead. Okay, now, yeah, I'll wait. Go ahead.
All right. A little different scenario here. I don't know if you saw the little blue that just came up next to Alicia. This is assuming, what if Alicia scored 460 instead of 447? That puts her at the 75th percentile, because she is outperforming 75% of the kids in her original cohort. So the Rhode Island Growth Model enables us to look at growth in addition to proficiency. So we all know, when we, when we do the kneecap scores, everybody knows, you know, how, we look at the proficiency. The kids who scored three and four, and, you know, and we check, we follow the trends and all of that. But this gives us another measure, and that is that we can see if the school is actually showing progress. That's a really important thing. So it allows us to ask, are district schools and students making progress, and what level of progress is being made, and are there gaps in growth between subgroups? Because you can, you can analyze this all sorts of ways, right down to the individual student. We don't do that in the public tool, but that is, we have private access to that, so we can look at individual students. Okay, another important thing about this is the model has what we call stretch, meaning that students at the very bottom of the proficiency scale have an equal chance to obtain a high student growth percentile as students at the very top of the scale. And that's important, because people will say, "Well, in my class, I have all high achievers." They're never going to show growth. But the growth is, is in relationship to other students who are high also. So they are rated relative to their group, just like the kids who have a lower proficiency rating are rated to their cohort. All right? So the example that I have seen is, if you have, who's the Olympic swimmer?
Michael Phelps.
The gold medal.
Michael Phelps.
Michael Phillips. If you have, Phelps, excuse me. If you have, how quickly we forget. If you, if you take his score and you're doing this type of thing, he's being compared to swimmers that swim as quickly as he does. So when you figure out his percentile, then it's, the percentile is relative to people who swim, you know, in his, his caliber of swimming.
When you, when you see the data, do you see it by cohort?
Yes, you'll see that, it's coming up. I think it'll answer your question, Linda. Okay, so this encourages students, schools, and districts with low proficiency to demonstrate high growth. It gives us encouragement to see the students, you know, growing and the school growing means they're doing things well. And focusing on growth can discourage complacency among high-performing schools and districts. Sometimes, you know, you say, "Oh, you know, we have high proficiency ratings. We, you know, we don't need to keep trying." And that's not the case, of course. There's always room for growth. So now, we have what's called this Growth Visualization Tool, and this uses median SGPs to summarize data for schools and districts and other groups. So what, what is this? And you're going to see this laid out. So if you don't, if you don't understand it right now, you'll see it in the next slide. So a median, first of all, is a measure of central tendency. You know, sometimes you do the mean, which is the average. This is the median, which is the middle of the scores. Right? And so then, the median SGP is the number at which half of the students in the group have a lower growth percentile and half have a higher growth percentile, or vice versa. So if you take all of the students, for example, in one class, now, you could do this for a class, or you could do it for a school. If you take all of them and you put the scores from low to high and just list them out like that, then you look for the median score there. Median score in this case is 60. So that means that half the students have a growth percentile above 60, and half the students have a growth percentile below 60. And that's how the median is found. In this case, this looks like a class, so this would be the median growth percentile, student growth percentile for that class. Everybody with me so far? Okay. And so they, we have what is called the Visualization Tool. Like I said, it's a public tool, and it's great for everybody to, to check it out. It's right on the Rhode Island Department of Education website. If you go to the homepage on RIGM, one of the easiest ways to do this, above you have all these categories. If you go to Information and Accountability, it will bring you there. And you click on Growth Model, it'll bring you to this page, and it says right here, "Go to the RIGM Tool, Rhode Island Growth Model Tool." And I'm going to just spend a few minutes showing you some of the capabilities that are on this tool, because it is fascinating. It's really a lot of fun. All right, so the first thing, up on the right-hand side here is a guide, and if you go through that, it's very, very brief, it'll tell you some of the things that I'm going to demonstrate here. So if you can't remember and you go on and you go through the guide, it'll be, it's a little self-help thing. It's, it's very useful. So you go to search, and there's many ways of approaching this. I'm going to go in and bring us right to North Kingston. So when you get here, this is, this is interesting, because we, we have this graph here. On the left side, the Y-axis is the proficiency. So any bubble that goes, the higher it goes, the higher the proficiency. All right, those are our scores for how well we achieved. If you go on the X-axis, going across horizontally, the further over to the right, the better. That shows the more, the most growth. So what you're looking for is high and right. So, and then, there's a couple of other things to point out here. You have the scores for math, and then you have the scores for reading. So these are our schools right here. The high school is inferior, remember, because of what I told you about, the 11th-grade testing. Okay, but we have all our elementary schools and our two middle schools there. Now, these bubbles, when you hover over them, will give you the name of the school, and I'll show you some other information about that. But the size of the bubble shows you the enrollment of the school. So the bigger the bubble, the more kids are in that school. Doesn't mean more kids were tested necessarily, but it's the population that's in the school. Okay? And then you also have, you can have the 11-12 school year or the 10-11 school year. Those, those two years are there. Those are the only two years that are in there. Okay, so watch what happens with these, these scores. We have the, for instance, this, this one right here. I have to look, because I can't see it from here. So this is Stony Lane for math, showed the most growth right there, and right now is showing the most proficiency. And then I'm going to switch to reading. And did you see that? Let's do it one more time. That's what it was like for math, and then is this, this is reading. So now, we have here this reading score, and that is Wickford Middle School with a growth of 71, and this is Fishing Cove with a growth of 71. So, yeah, so it's, it's quite interesting. All right, so now, when you do that, I'm going to just click on, let's go back to the math. I'm just going to quick, click on Quineset, and when I do that, you can either click on the bubble, or you can click on the right over here, and it will, it will highlight it. And so when you look at this, if you hover over the bubble, you'll see the growth rate, which is right there, the 52, and then it says more information. So you can click that on. And here, it gives you overall information. So on the left, it'll bring you to the school website, and this one is live. It does bring you right to the website. It'll bring you to the district website, right there. And then it'll also show you their observed growth for math and for reading. And then you can go to their student growth groups, and in this case, we have information for...
Sixty on his reading assessment for kneecap. And that puts him at the 50th percentile. So what's wrong here? They're both 50th percentile. How can that be when they have different scores?
Do you have a way of showing each cohort? Is that how you've divided out? You show each cohort? Because that's obviously the difference is that they're in different.
Yeah, that's the identification.
That's the answer, is that they are in different cohorts. So their student growth percentile is a relative only to their group. So they can both be in the 50th percentile. Tony's in the 50th percentile of his academic peers in third grade who scored at 350. Alicia's in the 50th percentile for her set of academic peers. They all scored 335.
All right, Dr.
Hang with me, John.
Okay, go ahead. Okay, now I'll wait. Yeah, I'll wait. Go ahead.
All right. A little different scenario here. I don't know if you saw the little blue that just came up next to Alicia. This is assuming, what if Alicia scored 460 instead of 447? That puts her at the 75th percentile because she is outperforming 75% of the kids in her original cohort. So the Rhode Island Growth Model enables us to look at growth in addition to proficiency. So we all know when we do the kneecap scores, everybody knows, you know, how we look at the proficiency. The kids who scored three and four and, you know, and we check, we follow the trends and all of that. But this gives us another measure, and that is that we can see if the school is actually showing progress. That's a really important thing. So it allows us to ask, are district schools and students making progress? And what level of progress is being made? And are there gaps in growth between subgroups? Because you can analyze this all sorts of ways, right down to the individual student. We don't do that in the public tool, but that is, we have private access to that, so we can look at individual students. Okay, another important thing about this is the model has what we call stretch, meaning that students at the very bottom of the proficiency scale have an equal chance to obtain a high student growth percentile as students at the very top of the scale. And that's important because people will say, well, in my class, I have all high achievers. They're never going to show growth. But the growth is in relationship to other students who are high also. So they are rated relative to their group, just like the kids who have a lower proficiency rating are rated to their cohort. All right? So the example that I have seen is if you have, who's the Olympic swimmer?
Michael Phelps.
The gold medal.
Michael Phelps.
Michael Phelps. If you have Phelps, excuse me. If you have, how quickly we forget. If you take his score and you're doing this type of thing, he's being compared to swimmers that swim as quickly as he does. So when you figure out his percentile, then it's, the percentile is relative to people who swim, you know, in his caliber of swimming.
When you see the data, do you see it by cohort?
Yes, you'll see that. It's coming up.
That's how.
I think it'll answer your question, Linda. Okay, so this encourages students, schools, and districts with low proficiency to demonstrate high growth. It gives us encouragement to see the students, you know, growing and the school growing means they're doing things well. And focusing on growth can discourage complacency among high-performing schools and districts. Sometimes, you know, you say, oh, you know, we have high proficiency ratings, you know, we don't need to keep trying. And that's not the case, of course. There's always room for growth. So now we have what's called this Growth Visualization Tool, and this uses median SGP's to summarize data for schools and districts and other groups. So what is this? And you're going to see this laid out. So if you don't understand it right now, you'll see it in the next slide. So a median, first of all, is a measure of central tendency. You know, sometimes you do the mean, which is the average. This is the median, which is the middle of the scores. Right? And so then the median SGP is the number at which half of the students in the group have a lower growth percentile and half have a higher growth percentile, or vice versa. So if you take all of the students, for example, in one class, now you could do this for a class, or you could do it for a school. If you take all of them and you put the scores from low to high and just list them out like that, then you look for the median score there. Median score in this case is sixty. So that means that half the students have a growth percentile above sixty and half the students have a growth percentile below sixty. And that's how the median is found. In this case, this looks like a class. So this would be the median growth percentile, student growth percentile for that class. Everybody with me so far? Okay. And so we have what is called the Visualization Tool. Like I said, it's a public tool, and it's great for everybody to check it out. It's right on the Rhode Island Department of Education website. If you go to the homepage on RIGM, one of the easiest ways to do this, above you have all these categories. If you go to Information and Accountability, it will bring you there. And you click on Growth Model, it'll bring you to this page. And it says right here, go to the RIGM Tool, Rhode Island Growth Model Tool. And I'm going to just spend a few minutes showing you some of the capabilities that are on this tool because it is fascinating. It's really a lot of fun. All right, so the first thing, up on the right-hand side here is a guide. And if you go through that, it's very, very brief, it'll tell you some of the things that I'm going to demonstrate here. So if you can't remember and you go on and you go through the guide, it'll be, it's a little self-help thing. It's very useful. So you go to search, and there's many ways of approaching this. I'm going to go in and bring us right to North Kingstown. So when you get here, this is interesting because we have this graph here. On the left side, the Y-axis is the proficiency. So any bubble that goes, the higher it goes, the higher the proficiency. All right, those are our scores for how well we achieved. If you go on the X-axis going across horizontally, the further over to the right, the better. That shows the most growth. So what you're looking for is high and right. So, and then there's a couple of other things to point out here. You have the scores for math, and then you have the scores for reading. So these are our schools right here. The high school is inferior, remember, because of what I told you about, the 11th grade testing. Okay, but we have all our elementary schools and our two middle schools there. Now, these bubbles, when you hover over them, will give you the name of the school, and I'll show you some other information about that. But the size of the bubble shows you the enrollment of the school. So the bigger the bubble, the more kids are in that school. Doesn't mean more kids were tested necessarily, but it's the population that's in the school. And then you also have, you can have the 11, 12 school year or the 10, 11 school year. Those two years are there. Those are the only two years that are in there. Okay, so watch what happens with these scores. We have, for instance, this one right here. I have to look because I can't see it from here. So this is Stony Lane for math, showed the most growth right there, and right now is showing the most proficiency. And then I'm going to switch to reading. And did you see that? Let's do it one more time. That's what it was like for math. And then this is reading. So now we have here this reading score, and that is Wickford Middle School with a growth of seventy-one. And this is Fishing Cove with a growth of seventy-one. So, yeah, so it's quite interesting. All right, so now when you do that, I'm going to just click on, let's go back to the math. I'm just going to click on Quineset. And when I do that, you can either click on the bubble or you can click on the right over here, and it will highlight it. And so when you look at this, if you hover over the bubble, you'll see the growth rate, which is right there, the fifty-two. And then it says more information. So you can click that on. And here, it gives you overall information. So on the left, it'll bring you to the school website, and this one is live. It does bring you right to the website. It'll bring you to the district website right there. And then it'll also show you their observed growth for math and for reading. And then you can go to their student growth groups. And in this case, we have information for economically disadvantaged students. So that's a subgroup that this school is showing. And then you can, and so you get the growth for math and you get the growth for reading. And then, in this case, the ethnicities in this school, we have just Hispanic. So you have to have at least ten in a cell in order for the data to show up. And that's to protect students so that you can't identify individual students. Okay. So then, I'll bring us back to the, to this site right here. All right, the next thing that's interesting is that we can also go by grade level. So if you go over to the left here, and you have by grade, this is for our district now. So now you can look at each of the grade levels. So say you wanted to look at grade three, you can see where grade three for the whole district falls for math. You can see where grade four falls, grade five, grade six, grade seven. So I may be looking at this and say, wow, look at this bubble. What grade showed the most growth in math? And that would be grade seven. If I check out reading, whoa, this bubble is way over here. Who is that? That's grade six. So grade six is showing, this past year, our grade six made that much growth in reading. So seventy-seven is pretty high. When you think of fifty, it's typical for percentiles. So, okay. And then a couple of other things that are really important. The first one, I'm going to bring us back to schools. And I want to show you the Explore Tool. The Explore Tool, if you go, after you click Explore and you go over to the left side, you'll get other information. So this is free and reduced lunch. So if I click that on, I now get a color line that goes from light to dark. And if we had better resolution here, you'd be able to see the colors better. But you can see, like, for instance, this one is a lot darker than the other schools. And when you have it and you have like a class or a grade of students, you can actually see, you know, the students come out in color by different, whatever you want to click on. So you can do the free and reduced lunch, you can do IEP, and you have the color there. In addition to this, there's a map view for the schools. So this is also handy if somebody's coming into the area and they happen to go on to this tool, or a realtor shows them the tool, or a neighbor shows them the tool. Well, it wouldn't be a neighbor yet, but if somebody was looking to buy in an area, they could click on a school and they would get the growth, you know, you click the View Performance, and it'll give you all the information that we saw previously when I clicked on. So that's also a neat part of it. And then the last thing that I'd like to show you, I'll go back to the schools. There's also a reset button over on the right if you want to get rid of the data and start over again. But the last button is the Discover button. When you click this on, it gives you options to click on all districts in the state if you want to do some data work that way, or charter schools, or state-operated, or suburban schools. Since we're a suburban school, it's good for us to compare ourselves to like schools. So now we have all of the schools that are in the suburban neighborhoods. And you can break this out by grade. So if you go over by the left, you can get all the third grades in the suburban schools. You know, if you wanted to look at your school as a principal, say you're looking at your third grade performance, or on the district level, we're looking at our third grade performance, might want to check out what some of the other districts that are like us are doing for their third grade. Maybe we thought it was the test, you know, the test results that had an influence. So you can do it that way, or you can break it out into the actual districts. And so we have the suburban districts here. And then if you want to see North Kingstown, I'll go over to the right, and I'm going to point to North Kingstown right here. And it shows us where we are relative, this is in math, relative to all of the other suburban districts. So you see where we're high on the left, it shows you, did you see that? On the left is the, our proficiency. So overall, our district is at seventy-nine percent proficiency in math, and the growth for math is at a percentile of fifty-four, which is above typical or above average. And then you can see all, where we are relative to all the other districts that are suburban districts in the whole state of Rhode Island. And I'm going to leave you with this last slide right here. Watch what happens when I go to reading. So we have outpaced in reading just about all of the suburban schools, because they're all in gray right there. And if I wanted to share this with somebody, then I could go to Share, and I can save it as a PDF, or I can go to Facebook or to Twitter. Isn't that amazing?
Yes, that's amazing.
So if you get a chance, go on and have some fun with it.
Your presentation.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Howard?
Yeah, I do. The, back to how the cohorts are, you know, based on grades, when does a cohort, when does a cohort become too small? You know, is there a, you know...
The cohort to demonstrate on here, John, or the cohort for the...
Like, when you were talking about how if...
The academic peers?
Yeah, Alicia scored a 335.
Right, right.
So what if only four people scored 335? Is that still reliable?
Well, no, it's not. That's why it has to be done across the state. So then when they take that slice, that slice has to be done beyond the district. It's too small to do just the district for reliability.
Yeah, Doc. We already had a long conversation about this, so thank you for humoring me today on this. But I think would it be helpful to explain to the committee and audience the discussion we had about teaching versus testing year? I don't understand the data.
Right. So the data that we're seeing, the administration of this, these tests fall, what you're seeing here is the administration in 2011, and then the year before was the fall of 2010. So the students took the test in that year, but the results are based on the teaching year. So the results are based on the previous year, not the testing year. And so when we were looking at median growth percentiles for teachers, which is what we're doing right now with the principals, then they are looking at students that, if I'm looking at a sixth-grade teacher, they're, we're seeing their sixth-grade students, but those students are already in eighth grade because they took the test in seventh grade. The teaching year was when this teacher had them in sixth grade. So that's one disadvantage that, you know, they had the students two years ago, basically, when they get this data. So that can be a little bit of a detriment. But you can still look for trends and see what's going on. And then they also have ability to see their current students and how those students are performing. And that's fascinating. We looked at several individual students to see what happened with them. And they can have similar growth percentile ratings or similar academic scores, and they tell a very, very different picture. And it will show you by arrow and colors if they're falling in a typical growth pattern or a low-growth pattern. And so you can get an idea, and you can actually, a plummet, when a student, you know, is plummeting in one year but has had consistent scores. I saw extremely linear student progression that, you know, went from very low in third grade, the student was two. So was below proficiency on, I think it was math, and progressed, just like I'm saying, diagonally linear to proficient with distinction after four years. We do have data that goes back four years when we look at the individual students that way. But the growth percentiles, we only have the last two.
Doctor, you mentioned, you showed, you gave us one example of how that website can be used as a tool, for example, you said, you know, looking at people, what neighborhood to move into based on the quality of education that the public schools are given. How do you, as administrator, see using that tool?
Well, there's a lot of things that we can tell. The public tool or the private tool provides even more information.
Well, the reason, I mean, the reason, what made me ask the question is because you pointed out that basically the information is two years old.
Mm-hmm.
You know, a year and a half, whatever. So it's, I don't see it a very good management tool from a, to look at the teaching methods of a particular grade level because it's two years old.
Right. Well, the thing, the legitimate concern is that right now we only have two years of data in this case. Because you can look at, hopefully, you know, once we start the park, we'll start this all over again, and we'll be able to see trends. Because that's what you want to do, is to be able to follow at least a three- to five-year trend, so for things to have meaning. So if you're seeing consistently that a school is not showing growth, then something's going on. You know, and if you can see consistent growth, that's what we're looking for. And, you know, as far as the neighborhood thing, too, I would be as happy with a school that was showing growth as a school that was showing high proficiency.
Doctor, will the kneecap scores that parents get eventually have the SGP included in that?
No, it's a separate report.
So how does a parent get that data?
Right. And, well, because, you know, this was our last year for kneecap anyway. So I think the best use for the student reports right now would be if you request, if a parent requested them, or if they came in for a meeting, and that was, that report was shared with the, with the parents. We haven't had a discussion as a district as to whether we would actually mail those home. And I think without having a full explanation of the, you know, what they mean, because you have to be really careful about misinterpreting this data. And so I would say would be best done in a team meeting with parents, with educators who can help explain some of what a parent is seeing.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Are there any other presentations or recommendations? All right. We have citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens who have signed up for citizens' comment?
Anyone who's signed up?
Anybody out there who wanted to, felt the urge to come up in, address this school committee? All right. So that brings us to Superintendent's report.
I don't have anything this evening other than to just remind people that next week we have a very special meeting. The first, we're looking at probably the first hour of which will be, the entire meeting will take place at Stony Lane Elementary School in honor of the Blue Ribbon. This is a very special event. I've mentioned a number of times in emails and on the webpage that the Blue Ribbon is the highest award for any school in this country, and it's given out by Arnie Duncan, Secretary of Education himself. And so some of us were at a ceremony last Tuesday in Washington to receive that with Principal Ed Ferrario, and it was quite an honor. And so in order to celebrate that back here at home on December 10th, a week from today, we will have our school committee meeting at Stony Lane. And the first hour of that will be a celebration, and that will include commissioner guests who will come and give some recognition to Principal Ferrario and the faculty and the whole school community for this huge accomplishment. This doesn't happen all that often. I believe this happened to North Kingstown in 2005 with Forest Park. And so, as you can tell, you know, it's a pretty rare thing and a very big honor. And it's something that, you know, we shouldn't take for granted, and we should definitely celebrate that. So that's what we're going to do next Tuesday night. I hope that as many people from the entire North Kingstown school community can attend because it's really a reflection on all of us, not just Stony Lane.
All right. All right, that brings us to routine items. We're not quite finished with our executive session. So I imagine we, Mary Ann, do we seal the minutes thus far?
No.
Okay, just wait for the end?
Okay.
And Lorraine, at this point, we have no executive session votes to disclose other than the...
But just the motion to recess and to, and to open session.
Do we need to reveal that now?
I could, I could. The motion passed six to zero.
Okay, thank you. All right, that brings us to the consent agenda, folks. I want to bring up a few things that need to be mentioned under personnel items. Item D. The first thing is on D2, the web page coordinators, last name should be spelled L-A-Y-T-O-N. Also, under the approval of appointments, please remove Ruth Marie Berry. Also, change the date of the starting time for appointment of J from 12:14, not 12:21. And the last thing is, at this point, we're still working out some things, so we need to pull D5, the approval of the Office of Family Learning. That's, once the, some questions get answered, then that should be on our next agenda. Other than that, are there any items to exempt from the consent agenda? Mr. Jones?
I'd like to exempt D2, please.
Are there any other items to exempt? Mr. Biscarton?
D8 for discussion.
Are there other items for discussion? There are no other items. I am looking for a motion to pass the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. Okay, all those in favor of passing all the items in the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion carries. Okay, Mr. Jones on D2.
Thank you. I just want to make a comment on D2. I just think, I'm not going to vote against it, but I do think as a grant-funded item, this is a function that should come under the traditional overhead of a grant. It should not be coming out of general funds from the district. I appreciate that we want to maximize all the grant funding to go to the primary purpose, but if this is part of running the program, it should be included in the grant. And the second comment I want to make on this is, it's tied to the discussion we had, I don't know if it was last meeting or the meeting before, of, I think we're up to 11,000 now on web coordinators and the outstanding motion that the committee passed to ask superintendent to do a cost-benefit analysis of outsourcing this function in the future. Thank you.
It's a point duly noted. It's something that, you know, we will look at for next year for making sure that that becomes a part of the grant. And I am, I am looking into the alternatives for the website coordination.
Is there a motion to pass D2?
Motion to pass D2.
Is there a second? Second? Is there any further discussion? All right, all those...
I'm just wondering what, because it says it's going to be prorated, right? So the, I'm trying to talk and pull it up at the same time. Yeah, affected 11:21 prorated. So what has been going on prior to this with the web coordination?
That spot hasn't, hasn't been happening since, so that's why it's going to be prorated. So this person is a new person. So for this school year, it hasn't happened with this group, with Cozy. So they're going to start now and it'll get prorated for the rest of the year.
Okay, then I guess that leads me to another question. What has changed that now, we've gone half a square without one, now why do we need one? Why, in other words, why are we doing it now? Why can't we wait and do it and work it into our next budget, which we're going to be starting here shortly?
Well, it was budgeted in the FY14 budget year that we're in right now. It's just that the person that was in it stopped doing it because they're not here. And so this person is put in so that it can get for the rest of the year, it can be updated. So it's not an unbudgeted item. It was budgeted.
I see. How, how is this going to affect our ability to do what Mr. Jones suggested? And Dr. Oji said he's looking at is possible outsourcing this whole project.
Well, I think that Mr. Jones was talking about for next year.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's what I mean. So how, I mean, if we approve this now and the person... So how, I mean, if we approve this now and the person is doing it now.
This is only for one year.
This is just for one year?
Just for this calendar year or school year.
School year.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? All right, all those in favor, yeah, Mr.?
I'm sorry, I apologize. I just wanted to make a brief comment on that, so, you know, and I don't want to get off topic, but, you know, Mr. Jones has, has brought this up in correspondence and has previously brought this up in committee meetings with his, his thoughts or concerns. And, and I've made a point of saying, both privately and publicly, that, you know, I don't want to see these things fall by the wayside. So, and, and I do see that on the list of school committee requests that we have here. So I'm going to ask that we also on our next agenda, which is December 10th, that we can have more of a discussion on this. And if Dr. O'Jay has something to report back on that, at that time, great. If not, the committee can have more of a discussion and, you know, whether it's just a discussion with no action, but I think it'd give the opportunity for the committee to have more discussion and kind of a course of action here.
I actually would like some more discussion on that because I'm really not clear on what it is the committee's looking for.
And I think if we list it as a specific agenda item on December 10th, we can kind of have a more open discussion on that.
Because it can be really broad range that we're talking, like a complete revamp or what. And I'm not really clear on that, so I would appreciate that.
I think, I think it would be helpful to everyone because I'm, I'm really not clear, to be honest with you, on it as well. So I think we kind of need to set some parameters as far as where we're looking to go with this. And hopefully through a discussion on that, on the 10th, we could do that. So, thank you.
If I can add to that, you know, right now, we are going through a process that the school committee voted on over the summer to do a major technology review. And, and part of that, I believe, will be, I would personally ask them to kind of weigh in, to talk a little bit about what is the best way that they see, you know, to arrive for the right kind of efficiency and to get the product that we want, that they would suggest in terms of a way to approach this as well. So this will be kind of an ongoing thing.
Thank you, Dr. O'Jay. And if I could just, again, for our clerk, I know we have a draft of the December 10th school committee agenda at this time. If I could just add, ask that we, we add that agenda topic to the draft at the December 10th school committee meeting so we don't lose it in the shuffle of things here. Thank you.
All right. So we have that added to the December 10th as a discussion, but for the person today, that will be what we're, we're voting on. So is there any further discussion on the person for the rest of this school year? All right. See no hands raised for discussion. All those in favor of the approval of the web page coordinator, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries. All right. That brings up to D eight, increasing hourly pay rate. Mr. Biscardin, you asked that to be exempted.
Yes, I would just like to have Dr. O'Jay open this up and, because this is, is really a, one of his goals, number one. Number two, it's a very important aspect of what we're trying to accomplish here in bringing a lot of the children who are sent out of district for various reasons and bringing them back in. So I think this is worthy of, of a discussion and explanation because it all kind of ties together on what we're trying to accomplish.
Sure. What, what I'm proposing here is, is a $2 an hour increase for the behavioral management teaching assistants in, in our district. As you know, we have recently gone away from an alternative learning program model for kids who have significant behavioral issues. Part of that model was for some of the students who could handle still continuing, you know, in the regular school building. We'd have a couple of programs around the district and faculty members who would work specifically with them and to the extent possible, try to integrate as much as possible into the regular school program. But a lot of students with that model were sent out of the district. This model works with more students. And it brings a lot of students who may have been tuitioned out, sometimes at a cost in the neighborhood of $45,000 a year, $60,000 a year per student. And brings them to the district. And with that kind of money, particularly once you're talking about, you know, say around 20 students, which is kind of the expect, the thinking that we have right now around the approximate number of students that if we weren't doing this program this way, would be going to out of district placements right now. That we're bringing those students back to the district. K through two students are at Fish and Co., grades three through five are at Hamilton Elementary. And the middle and high school students are currently in the D building. And we have plans, and it's going to require a lot of work this year from the school committee, town council, and construction work and such, to prepare Davisville Elementary for the full program to move there with the special education offices. And that seems to be going along pretty well. We just met with the architect today and we're on schedule to get this rolling with the school committee and town council again, probably in January. So, so this piece of it is for the, the teaching assistants that work in this program. It's a new program to the district. It's something where we really want, because of the challenging nature of the students involved, they are there because of significant behavioral issues. So much so that in the past, we have sent them out of district. A lot of them, not all of them. So this is not the same type of teaching assistant job that we have traditionally in the rest of the district. So what I'm looking to do is twofold. The first part of it is, the only part I'm asking you to approve tonight, and that would be to raise the wage for these, I believe it's nine people in the district, $2 an hour. And what that does is it makes it, it more attractive to the remaining TAs in the district and it makes it a job that people may, because of the wage increase, may want to apply to. And, and it also recognizes the different nature of the job. There's more of a possibility for, you know, having to de-escalate significant behaviors, possibly even using restraints. And where you don't necessarily have that in a regular classroom setting. And so it's not necessarily the first job that a teaching assistant may look at when they're applying to be a teaching assistant in this school district. They may have a different expectation of what they're looking for. And therefore, if the money's the same, well, it would be the incentive for me to want to be in that particular program. So it does that. The other part of, that I'm, I'm looking to do, just for information's sake, but not for a vote tonight, I plan to do this through the budget process, is that to allow, if, if people commit to a different level of training, where they get an associate's degree in, say, social work or education or counseling or psychology, and commit to a higher level of training, the kinds of training that we would need them to do for de-escalation and restraint kinds of techniques, they commit to this, that those candidates can receive up to $6 an hour, so four additional dollars in their paycheck. And, and make that something that people would feel like, I could really commit to this because I can see the incentive and the pay scale and it becomes something that I wouldn't mind, you know, now spending the money to get, and the time to get the associate's degree and really investing in, in making this, you know, a really important part of my career work. This is based on, as you know, the program is based from Mrs. Perry, our Assistant Special Ed Director, who was working at Charahoe. She had a similar program called the RISE program when she was at Charahoe. It was very successful, very successful at bringing a lot of special education funding back to the district. And it was very helpful to the students in the program. And over there, they redid the pay scale. They recognized that the, what they were now competing with were the out of district placements and the money that those workers were making. So they had to be looking to pay on a similar scale. And their ratio, ours, we're talking about a maximum of $6 an hour. And while I'm asking for tonight is two. But for them, they changed the skates, the pay scale to $9 to $11 an hour. And so I'm not looking to go that far, but I do feel like, for the reasons that I mentioned, that it would be important to compensate this level a little bit better. You know, and this is something that I believe the entire community can get behind. It's not, because we're only talking about nine people, some of which may not even get to the, the $6 an hour point, there may only be a few of them, but that it's not that big a ticket item in terms of monetary commitment compared to, you know, if we were doing this for every TA in the district or every teacher, for instance. That would become, you know, something that we could not, you know, be able to compensate and account for. But because it's just this group and, and because of the, the difficulty in their jobs and the high impact of their jobs, and as you know, you know, we have been getting a lot of pushback from, from our teaching staff, from members of the community about making sure that the people in these programs are well-trained, that the security is good for these programs. It's something that we really need to make sure that we're, we're doing right. And I think this is a, a part of that formula.
Thank you. So going back to what you said earlier, there, right now, we have 20 children who before this would have been sent out of district.
Some of them, some of them, many of them were sent out of district and, and many of them would be this year, depending on, you know, where they are at the moment.
So even at a modest $15,000 per, we have a gross savings before any costs associated with this new venture, that's $300,000.
Well, it is significant, yeah.
That's, that's, you know, that's, those are things, I think it's important that are brought out, that the public knows it, you know, even though we are.
Right. And I, and I, that's an excellent point, Mr. Biscardin. And it's something that I, I want to just hold on to for a minute because, you know, over the course of the year, we're going to be talking about, you know, the move to DE and all that. And that's going to be a high ticket item and the town council and school community are already aware of the kinds of numbers we're looking at for that move to redo the building. And, and it seems like, and it is, we're putting a lot of money into this. But I think, you know, when you look at that kind of a point, that, you know, a lot of these students would be going out of district if we didn't have this kind of a program, the long-term is, is a, is a big plus financially. And, and for, you know, a number of other reasons as well. But, so, you know, I think that it's important to keep the, that big picture in mind where this, you know, relative to that big picture, this is a relatively small ticket item and it will have a good impact. It'll make sure, it'll be part of the puzzle in making sure that, you know, this is well-staffed with, with the right people who are committed to this kind of work.
And, and keep turnover at a bare minimum.
Yes, yes.
Mrs. Abundata?
I have a comment, but I'd like to offer a motion to approve this item.
Second?
Yes, just a motion, second. Mrs. Abundata, do you have further discussion?
Can't, just very briefly, I want to concur with a lot of what John just said. And just, it, it's very good to explain for the public that may not remember what happened four years, six years, or, or whatever ago, when, when we first started down the road of discussion of, we had a lot of out of district placements in this district, very, very costly, and there were a lot of complaints about that. Not to mention the fact that it, it may not have been, these out of district placements may not have been the least restrictive environment for these children as their own home district would be. So that was a goal of the school committee and, and Dr. O'Jay supported that when he came in and he, we decided to change that. We've done that and he said he may need further support. And I think this is one of those times when we need to support. Patty Pizzullo has done a wonderful job. She's working really hard. She needs our support. It's critical that we support her in this effort. Our staff that's working with special needs children need the special training. It protects the students, it protects the teachers, protects the district that they have the proper training. And, and I think they're at a loss when they don't have the proper training as to, as to what to do. We're putting them at a disadvantage. So other districts are doing this already and I think it's critical that we do it as well. Thank you.
Are there other comments? Mr. Biscardin?
I just wanted, I just wanted to ask and just maybe remind that if we're going to, if you are going to require certain training and education standards to be met, hopefully there's a mechanism in place to keep it all file, making, making sure that they are kept current with their, their standards that they need to meet.
Oh, yeah, yes, we would.
So, so, you know, they're getting, they're getting, their pay is reflective of what their, you know, their actual training and development.
Yes.
And Dr. O'Jay, it's my understanding that because this will be a change in the job, tell me if I'm wrong, that these jobs will need to be rebid?
Yes, they may need to be reposted.
So in doing that, we'd also make sure that, that in having everything reposted, that would also mean that we would be, be sure to, of having the job open up and making sure that we get the best people in there.
We, we already have provisions in the contract that, you know, if we, if we feel, particularly in something like this, if we feel that our reposting is, is not, the results of that are not where we would want them to be for, you know, we, I can involuntarily transfer people. You know, I, I don't know if immediately upon doing this that there would be a lot of movement, but there is a potential for one or two people who would be very good for this work but haven't bid in, in the job process, that may show an interest at this point.
Mr. Biscardin, do you need it?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say, the concept of this is something that I support. And it's actually something that probably 10 years ago, when I was chairing the CLAC Committee, the Parents Advisory Committee on Special Education, that I had advocated for with the administration back then to create a subcategory of teacher assistants at a different pay rate. There are several school districts that have been doing this, as one of my colleagues said, for many years already. And obviously, a higher level of training and education and professional development required for those positions. I think I have one question and one concern. I guess my question would be for the superintendent or for legal counsel. Is this something that upon the committee's approval, that we would have a memorandum of agreement with the bargaining unit for because we're creating a different pay class within, within the contract?
I don't know.
I don't know how that would, how that would work.
O'Jay, have you already discussed this with the unit?
I, I have discussed it with Mrs. Franco. I believe she's in the audience, if I can see correctly back there.
So I guess my question would be is contractually, how would this?
This would be a memorandum of agreement that you're putting in a new category.
Okay. And I, I think my, my concern is, is that I would like to see, I can certainly support what we're doing with these nine positions tonight, but I would like to see more of analysis done with the other teacher assistant positions in the district that are working with our special education population, whether they be one-to-one teacher assistants or whether they be classroom teacher assistants working in the special education classrooms. Because I think we should certainly be taking those folks into consideration as well for potentially this category. Because I really feel that those folks as well should and do require a higher level of training, of professional development. And it's something that I've talked about for a long time, but we obviously never got to. So believe it or not, I would actually like the administration to maybe look into expanding this category and coming back to the committee with basically a cost impact of doing that. How many employees would be infected? And, you know, a rationale as far as something that the administration or the special education department would recommend or would not recommend to the committee, but it's something that I would ask that we, we look into. Because I don't think it's, it should be on the surface, and I, again, I would defer to the superintendent and to our special education director after they've, after they've had some time to analyze this. But I don't think it's something that should be limited to just the support staff in those few behavioral classrooms. I think we should look at the other programs across the district as well. You know, I'm sorry if I might be opening Pandora's box here, but I think.
I agree.
I think, I, I think in all fairness to the staff and the students that are in those other other programs, I think it's something that we should be looking at, so. And I've had the opportunity to personally, in years past, recent years past, tour some of our schools and buildings and sit in on some of those classrooms and some of those programs, and so I'm keenly aware of the challenges, both students and staffs and staff in those programs. So I think it's something we should take a little bit of time to take a look at. So I would ask that we do that, and maybe after the new year, it's something that we can take a look at and consider. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion on the table in the second meeting for this discussion. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. All right, that brings us to the end of our consent agenda and to unfinished business, and the first item on there is the 2013-2014 school budget. King, did you have anything that you wanted to bring up, or are you more interested in talking about the A and E?
Actually, I don't have anything, if anybody has any questions for me.
Oh, go ahead, Dr. Ogier.
Thank you. You know, this item, as I understand it, has been put on the meeting tonight to talk a little bit about, you know, looking forward to the presentation we make to the school committee and town council at our joint meeting. I just want to say a couple of brief words, and then I'm going to ask the school committee, you know, what your thoughts are on this, is that, you know, I'm not looking to make the budget recommendation that night, I think you all know that, that comes at a later date to the school committee exclusively first. But I do feel like it is important to talk about issues such as long-term sustainability. You know, we just talked about special education needs, and even with the savings that we're looking to incur because of the moves that we're making, special education is such a huge item for any school district, and it is one that seems to be growing exponentially and is something that we always, you know, a lot of it is out of our control, certain mandates about how we need to service students, we don't, you know, we have some say in how we do that, but not always. And so it's something that we need to sometimes invest in to save money in the long run, but sometimes we just have to make the payments, and so that's a difficult issue. The other areas we talked a lot about on this stage, capital needs and technology needs, and, you know, the long-term sustainability, you know, as I've grown in this job as superintendent, I've become more and more keenly aware of the long-term implications, that year-by-year funding is so important, but that there needs to be some measures in place in working between the school committee and the town council, where if, you know, we're talking about putting together a long-term technology plan, that plan doesn't mean a whole heck of a lot if it's a year-by-year decision in terms of how we sustain it and fund it appropriately to keep it fresh and keep it alive. And the same thing is true, as you know, with our capital needs, our buildings, they get older all the time, obviously, and it's not a surprise to us that, you know, these things need our care and need attention financially and in so many other ways on a regular basis, and it's hard to do that with, you know, a bond every now and again. So I know that this is a very, very complicated issue, but I think that's going to be kind of the theme of, you know, at least to get things started with my comments with the school committee and town council.
Is there any further discussion of the presentation that we're going to be making, or I should say the superintendent was making, on the December 16 meeting? Mr. Jones.
Thank you. I think it's important, obviously, it's a preliminary discussion, but we sort of frame stuff, I mean, I don't know if we ever really get the chance to communicate in a different venue to the larger town, so to give some sense of what the district's strategic goals are, you know, what's the vision for education. We just did, went through NEAS, and I know the results aren't released, but I mean, you know, we've had discussions, or things have been discussed about sort of where the district wants to head. I think it's important that we sort of frame that context going into the budget discussion, so that when we talk about the need for technology, we also talk about why, you know, where we're headed pedagogically to some sense, you know, why this technology is important. We ask for some capital stuff, you know, both the short-term sense of urgency on some things, but why also some other things are going to position us in the future for where we're headed. And I hope we tee up a discussion with the town council about sort of a joint vision for, in one sense, where the town's headed, you know, the education part of the town that is delivered, and to some extent that it impacts the students we get from Jamestown as well. It's sort of important that the town gives us too a sense of where things are headed. I know they're in the midst of doing their own study, economic development study, you know, our education system fits in different ways and complements that. So I'm hoping we can have a discussion beyond just sort of initial facts and figures, but also sort of set the context of where resourcing fits in the larger scheme, you know, what's really important to this town, where we want to be as a town, and then, you know, what are the outcomes we want for our students as part of that town? So, thank you.
I see your hand, Mrs. Alvin Dyer, I have a couple of questions for Mr. Jones. The meeting that we have on the 16th will be the town meeting, so I'm trying to clarify, would you like me to ask the town if it'd be more of a discussion or more of a presentation? Because what they're usually used to is the presentation style, and from what I heard from you just saying, you wanted to have more of a discussion of some town-wide goals, so that's why I'm asking.
Well, I mean, I certainly don't want to tell the town council how to do their thing, but as I recall, last year, the town part is pretty small, it's, it was sort of just that there's a revaluation going on and the tax rate will be something. I'm hoping that between the town council and the school committee and the town manager and superintendent, we can at least have a broader discussion about, you know, where resourcing fits. You know, we ask the taxpayers to give money for certain outcomes, and the outcome should lead to the priorities for the town and the citizens in terms of what we want to provide our citizens. So I'm hoping there's a larger discussion, even if it's a sort of broad sense of that. And I would hope we would, might tee up some areas where there's potential to collaborate on certain things, especially long-range planning, as the superintendent noted. You know, if we do this all in stovepipes, ultimately, the budget just looks like individual requests, and they're all competing individually. I hope that we can start to have a discussion about how things fit in some sort of synchronized manner for the town, so when those tough budget decisions ultimately come, you know, there's a better sense of how to prioritize those. So, not a great answer to your question, but, you know, maybe actually less presentation and more discussion might be my answer.
Okay. So would that be something that we would, should probably present with our budgets, more of our goals that have been developed by not only our administration, but also our community members when we had that meeting, and be pushing that towards discussing those with the town council, so that we show how some of our budgetary ideas also interact with the goals that have envisioned that we've already set up?
I, yeah, I would think that might be an interesting set of data to share, and I think, you know, to some extent, leaning forward, whether it's, you know, where we're headed with Common Core and the impact on that, you know, where we're headed with some other areas, you know, where we see enrollment trends and other things are headed. So, you know, as much as I think it's important to, you know, give us some snapshot of where we are financially, I think it's important to sort of tee up where it looks like we're headed, to set the stage for February, March, and April, and May.
All right. Mrs. Alvin Dyer, you have your hand up.
Yes, I did. Two things, just briefly on what Bob just talked about, there was an email that Bob mentioned some of this in, and I would definitely agree, it's been in the past strictly a presentation, and there's no real discussion between the committee and the town council, and that kind of strategic planning of two bodies together as a town, I think would be useful. That's just one quick comment. But in terms of the budget, my request would be that we have, several members of the committee have discussed having a staff analysis, in particular at the high school, so I would ask that that be put on our next agenda for discussion, because I know that there were multiple members of this committee that wanted to do so.
All right, but that isn't for the December 16 meeting, you're talking maybe about the December 10 meeting.
Our next one, the school committee, yes.
Okay.
If I could interject here, I'm already conducting a staff analysis, I'm just not sure that I'm going to have it prepared by the 10th. We have some data coming in, and the principal's been very good at working with us, but this would pretty much require me to have this before the end of the week, and I'm just not sure that that's possible right now. I'm certainly fine with including this, you know, for an in-depth discussion on maybe our January 14th, and including it in your packets for, you know, the overall budget, so you can see what we're dealing with in terms of staffing. But I just don't think I'm going to have it ready by the timeframe that would be needed to do it for next Tuesday night.
Not looking to rush that at all, I was thinking the committee would discuss how they want to go about doing that, whether or not we have an outside analysis done, or in conjunction with what you're going to present to us, or, so discussing it at, probably in January would be too late.
Too late, you're right, it would be too late.
We just thought that you were looking for exact numbers, because we are actually putting something together, if you were looking for a discussion, I mean, that's different.
Yeah, discussion, and that'd be good if we have those, we'll have those numbers probably when we discuss it, so.
All right, Mr. Sri Cee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just concur, I don't expect Dr. Ogier to have that information and those figures available for our next meeting, I think the committee just needs to have a discussion and decide what direction we're going in with that, whether it's going to be an in-house analysis, or an out-house analysis, or a combination of the two. If we wait until we get into January?
Guess what?
It's too far into the budget season for the committee to really take any action, if they want to take any action, as the case seems to be on a regular basis. So I would ask, and I know it's already been asked, that we have it on our December 10th agenda, so we can discuss it. Thank you.
All right, back to our presentation with the town, is there anything that anybody wanted to add on that?
Have we?
Yes, Mr. Sri Cee.
I'm sorry, I'm just shuffling between, I just need to back up for one second, I know when Dr. Ogier was speaking, we went to 4, 5B, just going back to 5A for a second, the current budget year, 13, 14. Actually, did have some questions and concerns that in all likelihood will lead to a budgetary item regarding transportation. I haven't had an opportunity, my fault, to speak with Mrs. King and Dr. Ogier regarding those questions and concerns I have, so in fairness to them, I have an opportunity to speak to them regarding those questions and concerns prior to our next meeting, but just as a placeholder on the agenda, if we could have a subcategory under the 13, 14 budget agenda item as transportation. So I, again, I am at fault for not having that discussion yet, with the questions that I have for them, and I just want to give them an opportunity to have that discussion, and I'm hopeful that the questions I have can be answered to, and we won't have to have it as an agenda item, but I would just ask that we have it as a placeholder at this point. Thank you.
All right, is there any further discussion on item 5B, the discussion with the town? All right, was there any discussion on the CIP, the future bond, existing bond? Mr. Biscard?
Mrs. King, I don't know, I don't expect an answer right now, but all the work that's been done over the summer, including anything that has lingered on into the school year here, does that wrap up all the bonds that we've had? Is there any bond monies left? And I'm not looking for a number, I just, you know, yes or no?
A very small amount of money, there, I believe there's a small amount of money that's left on the $9 million bond that was from 2007 or 2008, and we used quite a bit of that money that was left for the Wickford Middle School heating system this summer, and I think there's, there is some left, and I don't have a number because we're not final on that yet. And there is a small amount of money from the $6.4 million bond, and I don't have that number either, but, you know, I'm certainly working with Phil Bergeron and Jim Partridge to get that final number, but it's really not huge significance.
Yeah.
But clearly, I will work to get something done with the funds that are left, and I'll report back when I do have a final number on that. The contractor does have some things, they're still wrapping up a couple of items that they, some delays in equipment that they needed for, you know, some heaters in classrooms and whatnot, so they are still wrapping things up, that's why it's not completely final yet, but I can report that out once we do get that, I'm hoping, in the next few weeks.
Just as an aside, do we have to get the elevators squared away? Are they all?
Oh, yeah, no, they're all set, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
And just, any of them, any of the money that's left over from these bonds, can they be, can you reappropriate that through the proper channels? I mean, is there a way to, or is that money just going to go away?
No, you know, we would work with the town and RIDE, because clearly, there were things that we were unable to do because of cost in that $6.4 million bond, so we would, you know, work with RIDE on getting approval on that, and clearly with the town as well, but the monies can go away, or we can agree to use them again, but those are the two areas, we would need approval from RIDE as well on what it is that we wanted to do with the funds.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones.
Thank you. Mrs. King, did the asset management committee meet?
Yes, we met on, I think it was November 21st, I can't remember, but yes, it was a Thursday a couple of weeks ago, and we did meet, and we went over the school department CIP that had been presented to them, just like it was presented to you, and I have not received any feedback yet from Mr. Bergeron, he said that he would get back to me if there were any more questions from the committee, and I can answer them, and we would go through the process, which the next step would be that that committee would present something to the town council, that's my understanding of the next steps of that committee.
Any other questions? All right, that brings us to policies. You have two policies in front of you, the first one to take a look at is the emergency sick leave policy, basically, the changes that have been made in that are, I'm sorry, I didn't bring it up, I just realized I didn't bring it up. So the first, the first changes that are in there is to kind of clarify that no employee can donate more than three days of sick leave per year, the initial enrollment has to be decided upon in the very beginning of the school year, and it has to, we were having some issues of making sure that everybody donated three days that they already had, and it would be deducted automatically unless somebody would opt out. Some of this is just a lot of making sure that we're more precise in the policy than we had been before, we also wanted to have a more of a checking balance, so... We also wanted to have a more of a checking balance, so that we could say that, as you see, we break up the time, that you aren't automatically given a number of sick days, that you have to, you have 30 days, and then if you can reapply after that point. We also, because we approved the Family Medical Leave Act, we put that in there also to comply with that. And we're also talking about the appropriate forms that need to be filled out. So are there questions about the GCVR, the rules for the sick thing? All right, if there are none, do I hear a motion to pass GCVR?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Great, the second policy is the building usage policy. And this is one that we have had come before the committee a number of times over the last couple of years. The changes that we're suggesting that we make now have to do with, again, making some deficiencies that we've seen in what we're doing now. So what we're, we cleaned up some of the language on the first page, and on the second page, again, there were some language changes, making sure that people, we stated what the form was that people were to use. On the second page, again, the applicant makes a payment directly to the North Kingston Police and Fire Department, so we spelled that out. Probably the biggest change that we're making here is a recommendation for the rate of groups that are not nonprofits and are not North Kingston groups, and we're recommending that those fees be raised. We also did say that the custodial maintenance food server, food service worker rate be at the contractual rate, and since that has varied in the past, we, instead of putting it into policy and having something that could change, as we changed that wording to say, that it would be according to the contract that we have with the particular group at that time. So our reasoning for not changing the community and nonprofit rate, the fee schedule for A, is that we found that a number of years ago, we did raise that rate, and we found we actually lost usage, so we weren't making a recommendation to raise that rate, we were only making a recommendation to raise the B rate, because we saw that as groups who were in the profit mode, and so that was the reason that we felt that that would be raised and we wouldn't necessarily lose the revenue that we do get from this, which is not very substantial. But are there questions about KFR? Mr. Jones?
Thank you. This is Paige. First, I'd like to thank the subcommittee for their work on this, and including the point about trying to build in some incentive mechanisms for more efficient usage. I guess we can debate, you know, what's a substantial or not substantial amount of revenue, but the point is, is that, you know, our buildings, we incur costs when they're used, and so we need mechanisms to recoup those. I do appreciate that for the town use, by the town side, that we don't charge a fee, which I think is appropriate, and give them a high priority short of our own district usage. But I think it's important for the town to understand that there's an opportunity cost, you know, when they use those buildings, that we're giving up revenue for that, and so I think it's incumbent on, you know, the superintendent, working with the town manager, that we efficiently use those. We give the town as much as they need, so they can provide the services they do, but we efficiently use them, so we don't lose the potential opportunity for us to raise revenue with other sources. A couple of specific questions are clarifying this sort of informal use that was in the policy by sort of ad hoc, not ad hoc, but sort of student use, or just what I sort of call pickup use, and just sort of clarifying what's the difference between, you know, an organized group using it and sort of a, so it seems to me that, you know, what constitutes sort of an unorganized group using it, and if there's potential liability issues associated with that.
Are you talking about a specific, could you make a reference to what specifically were you talking about?
Yeah, sorry, I don't have the policy that I had marked up in front of me, but I think there was a point in the policy that talks about groups won't be charged if it's sort of an organized pickup activity, not affiliated with a certain group, and just wanted to clarify any sort of liability issues there. The second thing I'd like to address is, I guess, the potential to clarify if a nonprofit organization is using it, but also using it in association with a for-profit group, what rate would prevail in that circumstance?
We would look at the, Mrs. King, please correct me if I'm wrong, but it would be my understanding that we'd be looking at who is sponsoring the event.
Basically sponsoring the activity. So that would be the group, the rate you would go at.
Because my only concern would be a for-profit group finding a nonprofit sponsor, when essentially it's the for-profit group really, really executing it. That would just be a concern I would have in that sense. And I guess it might be up to the discretion of the administration to sort of figure out in the request who was doing all that. I would also add, and this is, take a little liberty for an editorial comment, is that, well, I think the policy's a step in the right direction. I think the next step is, and this is something I see as a joint issue with the town, is that in this day and age, there's really no reason why collectively the town facilities, be it Wilson Park or the high school gym, we can't move to a thing where this is all online and more transparency about scheduling and facility use is made available to our citizens. I think this is something we should work jointly with the town on, because I think it's great to have this change in policy, I think it moves in the right direction of more efficient use, but ultimately, we need to provide better transparency and accessibility for the folks who want to use this, our facilities and that. So, short editorial comment, thank you for allowing me to do that. I would just, again, just sort of reiterate the one comment about, and I'm sorry I don't have in front of me, but the point about the sort of informal, groups that don't have a formal nonprofit organization or thing, you know.
Yeah, I'm not really sure, I was looking through the policy, and I'm not really sure.
I'll tell you where that is, I saw it.
Okay.
It's athletic fields, and it's number 10, brass 10. Athletic fields at middle and elementary schools will be available to informal groups of minors and/or adults, and they're just talking about a bunch of kids from the neighborhood or somebody just going over and using the field, and that's.
Yeah, but the, just confusing thing is they still need to secure permission, I think that's what the policy says. So sort of, you know, I assume, you know, what's the liability issue of this sort of informal group? Because I know normally when you request things, you have to have either some proof of insurance or something that goes along with that, so, you know, I'm just kind of curious how that sort of works. I don't think we should be limiting opportunities, but, you know, I'm just curious that if we give formal permission, you know, is the group expected to have some kind of insurance? Are we insured against that kind of scenario?
I think that's a tough one. I don't think we can legislate that, that's just my suspicion, is that kids that are taking a walk, for example, a couple of kids, three, four kids, and they walk over, and they happen to walk onto the grounds, we don't secure every inch of the ground, so we can either allow the kids to kick a ball around, which everybody does for years, you know, or else we'd be treating them like as trespassers, we're sort of in a, I think it's appropriate to allow it, frankly, I think it would be over. Encroaches, trespassers.
Right, I don't disagree.
Yeah, my understanding of the policy is that what we're saying is that if you have a bunch of kids who go over to Wickford Middle School and start playing, we're not going to charge them any fee. However, if they start some sort of organization where you have them come over from one street and they start playing another game, and they start doing this every week, then they're going to need to have formal permission, because it is this sort of thing of you're now organizing some sort of, even if it's just a local league. And obviously, the people who have already paid for admissions to the fields for use of recreation, they're going to have first precedent.
Okay.
All right, is there any other questions? And if not, I'm looking for a motion for this.
Motion to pass, but I do have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Bussard.
General rule's number three, it's on packet page 23. It says, "No part of the school shall be rented unless some responsible persons, person or persons be present on each occasion." What defines responsible? I mean, because I see you taking out school personnel, so I'm just curious, is it, what determines if the person, you know, if there's a responsible person on site? I mean, would that be, I mean, does that mean like the leader of the group? I mean, whoever reserved the room?
Right, well, you know, primarily what it means is if, you know, ABC group is sponsoring an event, the person who's in charge of the ABC group should be the person who is there in responsible in charge of the event. Our goal is to make sure that we have a contact, that we know who is responsible, if there are any issues that are, you know, need to be addressed, the facility is damaged, or anything comes up. So it's not just that, you know, we have this organization, this group, and we don't know who's in charge of that organization, or who's in charge of that particular event. So that's what that means.
That's what I was going, so basically, whoever's signed, whoever reserves the room is the person, okay.
All right, we have a motion on the second. Mr. Jones?
Thank you. Just to clarify a couple of things, if we approve this policy, I assume the provisions will go into effect, so we'll seek out the 50% non-fundable deposit for those who have already, to whom it applies?
I would implement this for new people who sign up new, not for those who have already signed up.
Okay, and going forward, I assume, and I apologize, I don't have the policy, I didn't bring my notes on it, is there a window if that deposit's not received, where the reservation is forfeited, returned back?
I don't know, I don't know if there's one in the policy or not, but, I mean, we can say that it needs to be within a week before the event, or days before the event, or whatever. I don't think we have that in the policy.
We know, we don't have that in the policy.
But we can add that if you have a recommendation a week before the event, or, you know, three days before the event. Sometimes, you know, you go too far, you know, sometimes they don't reserve that part in advance.
Right, I'm thinking more of the groups that rent it multiple, for multiple months, weeks and months, that, you know, there should be something before.
So what you're saying, I think, is if they're, this is what we did in East Providence, if they're renting today for two months in the future because they want to secure that site, we would want to get that deposit within a week or two of today, is what you're saying.
Right, yes.
So then that way that they don't cancel on us and we lose that space.
Correct, and if they've rented it for, say, every week for the next three months, that we secure the entire amount before the first usage. So again, I think it's sort of, again, we want to incentivize, you know, efficient planning.
So then why don't we say that we secure the deposit within seven days of their signing up? So it doesn't matter when they signed up, but it's within.
Seven days of the reservation.
Seven days after approval, I guess.
Right, mhm. Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Is there any other questions in policy? All right, there are no further questions or discussion. All those in favor of approving policy KFR, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. All right, that brings us to the end of our agenda.
Can we do the correspondence discussion regarding anonymous?
So we have one item on our agenda that's stated, it is discussion of regarding anonymous letters. In the past, what we have done when we receive anonymous letter is, while we've shared them with other members of the committee, it's an anonymous letter, so we don't really do anything more with it, because we don't know who it's from. Just Mrs. Almazado.
I don't agree with that at all, personally. I think it's incumbent on us, if there's any kind of a letter with any specific allegations in it or information, and it's not just generalizations, that it's incumbent on us to look into that, or it could be, depending on the circumstances and what it says. You know, I don't think you just dismiss something because it's anonymous. Whistleblower complaints are anonymous, and I think we, you know, it depends on the seriousness, it depends on what it says. I certainly wouldn't subscribe to some general policy that we disregard anonymous letters. I think that that would be a mistake, and I think it could very well be a dereliction of duty, depending on what the letter said.
Well, we certainly have to discount to a certain extent, you know.
What if it says a date, and that someone, that, say, for example, a child was molested by someone, I'm just giving an example, I mean.
Penn State disregarded a lot of anonymous letters.
I think that's a bad general rule. I think it depends, I think you have to use a judgment call there and look at it and say, okay, this is just a bunch of generalities. And I think the superintendent's done that before, like when he receives something that's very general and kind of all over the place, or just a slur type of thing, he doesn't, may not pay any attention to it. But if it had specific information in it, I know that, you know, he would, or I would expect that he would, I think he would, look into that.
Well, if we get an anonymous letter of a parent complaining that Johnny doesn't get enough play-in time, and they're afraid that if they give their name, there's going to be retribution against their child, I would say that that would need to be discounted, because A, if your child isn't getting playing time, what is there to retribute? The coach can't bench them more, so sometimes I think anonymous letters are just a way for people to vent. We had situations with their anonymous letters with a bus transportation issue we had last year. Some of the issues were true, and some turned out to be fabrication, so. To generalize everything, as you did, Mr. Cerisi, about Penn State, I think that's a.
No, the generalization was the opposite, and it's on the agenda saying we assume that it's not true, and that's the wrong generalization. We're saying use judgment and balance it. I agree with you, John, you know, you can't just assume, and especially the example you gave is the perfect example of something that you don't look into.
Let me just clarify.
You know, that's just like venting over playing time in their child.
Let me just briefly clarify. Anonymous letters, we can't have this general policy that we will disregard or discount any anonymous letter sent to the school department. You just can't have, you just can't cast that wide net and say that that's our policy, we discount any anonymous letter. I think hopefully the adults and the professionals in the positions that receive these anonymous letters will use discretion as far as something that is substantial, could be substantiated or discounted, and use that discretion on whether a anonymous communication is going to be further looked into or not. Certainly, if you receive a letter that says a UFO landed in the football field last night, we're not going to spend much time looking into that, but if it's something that's a health and safety issue. that's a health and safety issue, um, regarding students or staff, I, I think it's something that we would, and I know it's something that the superintendent would take, uh, some time to look into, to see if it's something...
Or even a bullying issue. We've seen a lot of issues of kids, you know, taking their own lives regarding bullying.
The, the, um, you know, when, when I receive anonymous, whether it's a letter, email, um, or just, you know, any anonymous information with some kind of a concern, um, I, I feel it's my responsibility to investigate it. Now, obviously, you know, the UFO landing, uh, I'm not so sure. I'm going to take that nearly as seriously as...
Depends on if it was a full moon.
(laugh) But I may have Dr. Kenworthy go on the field, just in case. Um, but no, I, I do, I do follow up, you know, um, to an appropriate extent, depending on the nature of the, um, you know, the tip. Um, something like, uh, your child molestation, or something like that, I'm going to be very serious about, and I'm going to follow up as much as I possibly can. Um, but the point is that, um, there's a limit to what I, as the superintendent, can do, and I think we, as the committee, um, can do with that. And, and we talked about this in, in terms of our contract with teachers, and, and this is a provision in that contract, that if there's an anonymous tip to a principal about a teacher, um, that we have a responsibility to investigate that. But we cannot take an action on this necessarily just based on the anonymous tip. We should be able to find out information, um, to verify, to go, you know, deeper into the details of that. And then, you know, then it's something that we can take action on. But if, um, if someone is saying, you know, um, I think, uh, a, you know, a teacher should be fired because, um, you know, they did something to my kid, um, I can't use that as the sole evidence that this has happened. I have responsibility to investigate that, and to find, any way I can, to find out what happened. But not necessarily simply based on that one tip alone. You understand me?
That's why you do the investigation, yeah.
Yeah, so I have, I have the responsibility, and I will, investigate, um, but in order to be able to do something about it, fi, you know, once I find out that it's legitimate, uh, hopefully through that investigation, I found out in a different way than just the letter, that I have some kind of verification. Even if that's just talking to the teacher, or to the coach, or to, you know, or, you know, just finding out on my own, seeing it for myself, then certainly I'm going to take action. Uh, but, that being said, you know, uh, retribution is a serious charge. It is something that can get, uh, an employee in this district in a lot of trouble. Um, so I, I would be very, you know, I know that it's something parents will worry about in terms of things like playing time and all that, and that may be very real. I, I understand that. But that's also a charge that if someone feels that it's happening, that is something that I would investigate. Um, and it would be, not be an acceptable, uh, way to proceed for someone who feels like, you know, a person has gone over their head to their superior to complain about a legitimate complaint. I hope we would all be better than that, and I would hold people to the standard to be better than that. Um, so, you know, I'm going to investigate what needs to be investigated, and I think you all know that as well, and would do the same thing, and would insist that I do so as the superintendent. Um, and, you know, but i- and, like I said, that being said, it really is helpful if there is a name on the complaint, because I'm going to make sure, I'm going to do everything I can to make sure there is no retribution. And it helps in the, the issue of being able to follow up. Can you tell me how I could learn about this, you know, in, in another way other than your telling? Is there somebody else I can talk to? Is there a place that I should be looking to see more evidence of this? And that really helps. And, and sometimes I can keep people, um, their names confidential, even if they've given me their name when they called me, you understand? So, there's a lot of different variations on this, and, uh, but, you know, of course, I am going to be investigating this complaint, no matter whether it's something, someone gave me a name, or whether it's anonymous.
Mr. King?
Um, thank you. I, I guess I'm maybe a little confused about why this topic's on here, um, because based on what the superintendent said, based on the comments by Mr. Cerisi and Mrs. Avanzano, I mean, I, I hope we're not ha- having this discussion about a policy of dismissing them, and given, again, what the superintendent said, it sounds like we have things in place. You know, my question would be, is the town's got the whistleblower system. I don't know if that's for the entire town, including the school district. Um, if it is, maybe it's not well-known, um, that, that's also for, for any issues of, related to the school district, um, or not.
I do get some issues to that from time to time.
Um, but, um, but, but I would say, you know, based on what the superintendent said, it, it sounds like, you know, there's an appropriate level of attention given to those, but we should not be, you know, discouraging anybody to think that we're going to dismiss those. And I would also add that, based on what the superintendent said, maybe, you know, there needs to be a little more clarity given to folks of, you know, if they want to write and sign their name, that some level of protections will be afforded to them. I think maybe that's more of the concern that people have, um, that how that stuff would be safeguarded, as, as the superintendent noted. So, um, I hope that's, this is all we're talking about, and not really going any further.
All right, are there any good comments? Because we've received three, um, anonymous letters within the last couple of weeks. So, it was a sort of thing of, since we had received...
Some clarity?
Yes, we, since we've received three, it was a thought that perhaps we should discuss what the committee wanted to do from here.
Thank you.
If there's no further discussion on anything, then we should adjourn back into executive session. Do we have a motion to, to adjourn back from this second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned, thank you. Why don't we go back into the library?